Almost there. It's been weird for a second. Sorry, it's taking just a second. For some reason, the livestream is not working correctly. I am recording though, so let's go ahead and start. Go ahead, Commissioner Ammons.
Thank you very much. The March 26 regular meeting of the Public Disclosure Commission will come to order. This meeting is anything but regular, and our times are anything but regular, but we do have a commitment to carrying forward with the essential business of the commission. The time is now 9:30. Is 9:36 a.m. And we are conducting this meeting remotely for the first time in my recollection. We had decided some weeks ago to do so during this period when public health officials and the governor were discouraging travel and also meeting in groups. We now have the Governor's Emergency Executive Order 20-28, which says the public's ability to attend is by remote only, and that in-person attendance is not permitted at this time. We do hope that members of the public will be able to follow us, and as always, we do welcome public comments by email and telephone, and eventually we will return to our normal wide-open welcome to everyone as we meet in Olympia again someday. I'm David Ammons. I'm Chair of the Commission and a longtime Olympia resident, and I'm joined by other commissioners from across the state. I would like for them to introduce themselves. Unmute for this introductory period, and I'll start with the Vice Chair, Russ Lehman.
Russ Lehman here from Olympia.
Brad Jarrett here from Mercer Island.
Nancy Issler-Less from Spokane.
And this, I hope, is Bill Downing in Seattle.
We hear you, don't see you.
Has everybody else got the video working okay?
Yeah. Did you press the video button?
I did. It's not lit up.
Oh. Janice, can you give assistance?
No, I can't. I can't see his screen, so if you... Can you see your camera?
No. I mean, it's not... The video button is not lit. It's not live.
And so when you hover over your screen, you can see the different icons?
You know, I don't have anything. I just have the telephone. I think I'm just in my phone. When I went on the Team site, it says you're not on Teams yet. You don't have authorization and so on. I think I used my personal email rather than the PDC email to try to log on, and that might mess things up.
Yeah. Yeah. So at least we can hear you, though.
All right. Good enough. Thanks. We'll sort it out later on.
Very good. Thank you for joining us, Bill. We now have perfect attendance. I would also invite staff who are currently online with us to introduce themselves.
Good morning, Mr. Chair. This is Peter LeValle, Executive Director, holding down the fort all alone here at the office in Olympia. And I've got my hand sanitizer, my Clorox wipes, and my tissues. We're safe here.
Thank you.
Good morning. It's BG Sandel, the Deputy Director. I feel like I'm in... I don't know, the Arctic. Our house is freezing. I'm trying not to have a $500 heating bill while we're working from home.
Sean, are you on?
Hi, this is John... Hey, this is John Meter, the Assistant Attorney General for the Commission from Olympia. Hello.
Good morning.
And this is Sean Flynn, General Counsel, on the line.
Kim Bradford, Communications and Outreach.
Hi, Kim. Anyone else?
This is Attorney General.
Thanks.
This is James Gutholm, CIO from Olympia, and I'll be mostly just listening and kind of popping in and out as we go.
Thank you. I'm not hearing anyone else. We will have staff chiming in as their part on the agenda pops up. Our meeting will be held in a kind of unusual fashion under what the Governor's Order calls Necessary and Routine Business. Some items on our previously posted agenda may well be deferred until April meeting or later. For the Chair's Brief Report, I would just reflect that the work of the PDC staff and commission goes on. We're requiring some shifts in how that business is conducted and during an emergency situation such as we're in. We'll hear more from Executive Director LeValle in a minute about how that has been occurring, and also I know that the commission is greatly pleased with the work of the staff and flexibility to work from home and to continue the vital work of the commission in difficult circumstances. Our legislative session has now adjourned. It seems like months ago, but we did not receive passage of our request legislation. And more on that in a little bit. And we will regroup for the 2021 session, which will be a main budget recalibration session and writing of the new biennial budget and consideration of policy agendas. And we do have some of that ourselves to bring forward. We do, in the meanwhile, we have a strong Disclosure Act that has its roots in a citizen initiative passed almost 50 years ago. We have a strong and diligent staff and excellent laws and tools to use as we go forward and accomplish our core mission. And we do continue to look ahead at the same time for continuous reform and upgrades to assist the regulated community and the public at large, including IT enhancements and early work toward a public campaign ad archive. At this point, I would like to invite Peter to give an update for the commissioners and the public on operations and staffing during the coronavirus pandemic. Peter.
Thank you, Chair Ammons. Just a quick update for everybody that we are streaming live now, which is great, so that provides full public access. And of course, we're recording as well, and it will be available for streaming later for anybody who doesn't join us live. This has been quite an unprecedented time. Needless to say, we made the call about a week ago that for the protection of the public and staff, that we would close down our regular, open-to-the-public operations. Thanks, in no small part to the IT team under James's leadership, but to everybody on staff, literally to a person. We were able to set up remote working pretty much seamlessly. Frankly, I knew we had a good plan in place, but I was amazed at how seamlessly it went. Using Microsoft Teams, for instance, which we're all using to conduct this meeting right now, we've been able to have all of our regular meetings, collaborate freely, of course, email and chat and phone calls and Teams meetings have really allowed us to continue our operations. I have some stats just to give you a sense of how that's going. Looking at a week ago, or this equivalent week in 2019, a year ago, we resolved 188 help desk tickets. This past week, we resolved 177. So that's 188 versus 177, clearly within the same ballpark. Trainings that we had for the month of March in 2019, we had 16 attendees. This month, we've had 19 attendees. Compliance cases resolved over the past week in 2019, we had 21, and this past week, this year, 39. So I think that reflects that work continues apace. There's been very little interruption in our operations. Staff has been very flexible. We put a plan in place that people could, using Teams, work from their own home computers if they want, but it would all be in the cloud, so it remains... Any documents that are created, any records that are created, remain PDC property. But we also set up a plan where people could set up an appointment to come in and retrieve equipment from their office. So nobody would be here at the same time. There'd be no worry about overlap and contamination and sharing of virus. God forbid if anybody were infected, and that's worked really well. Jan has been doing a great job of coordinating that, make sure people have slots and they don't overlap. As I mentioned, I'm here today and can confirm nobody else is here. I know, under the Governor's Order, this meeting is closed to the public, but just in case, until 9:29, I was down at the front door. We did put a sign in the front door explaining how to access this meeting online and that it would be closed, but I was standing there just to see if anybody showed up and tried to get in. And I can report that there were no such members of the public hoping to join us in person today. We're trying to keep things as normal as we can for the staff. I know this is difficult for all of us across Washington and across the nation and the world for that matter. For instance, yesterday, we had a sort of morale-boosting all-staff meeting where we asked everybody to bring their pets and put them on the video like we're sharing right now and got to meet each other's pets, and it was just a great way to keep some of that human interaction that we're all missing, not being in the office together. So I don't want to belabor the point, but I think we're in remarkable shape. Things are going well. I'm sure there will continue to be hiccups along the way, but we seem to be handling them well and addressing them well, and we thank the commission for their support in that. And again, the IT team has been amazing in helping us work through this.
You did have a new policy that you presented to staff and that they signed. Do you want to talk a little bit about that? I thought that was well done.
Oh, yes, sure. Thank you. We dusted off our existing remote working policy, updated that to make sure it still makes sense in the current environment. Big shout out to Sean for his help on that on the legal front, and we did get that to all staff. So, and asked them all to execute a copy of it for a couple of reasons. One is obviously to make sure that we have a record of that, but also it's an educational tool so that people know what resources are available as they work remotely and remind them of the importance of all public records remaining within the custody of the agency so that we can continue to provide public records as requested, which we are doing. And that policy seems to be fitting the bill quite well.
And I read separately that there is a possibility of staff being compensated for out-of-pocket costs for their own use of their own equipment at home.
That's right. Thank you for mentioning that. We did reach out to OFM, the Office of Financial Management, to see what we could do in that regard, because obviously even if those people, including myself, who have brought a computer from work, are still using their own home internet access or occasionally their own cellular data plan. So we did get confirmation from OFM that we can offer up to $30 a month for reimbursement for cellphone data or internet access, and so we have offered that to staff, and we're in the process of working through those reimbursements with OFM and expect to continue to do so on a month-by-month basis as long as this lasts.
Very good. I would like to provide the other commissioners an opportunity to ask questions or comment on operations and how things are going in this interim period. So at this point, open to your comments or questions.
Nothing here. Thanks, Peter.
Again, thank you all.
Nothing here either. Thank you very much, Peter.
Very good. Well, it sounds like you did a crack-up job of doing the explanation of where we're at right now, Peter. Thank you so much. I do appreciate it. I assume in terms of public comment that we have not received any written communication to that we should be aware of since the last meeting.
That's my understanding. Jan or anybody else on the team, let us know if you've received anything late-breaking.
I have not received anything, no.
And as I mentioned, nobody attempted to show up here in public today, so we can confirm that as well.
Peter, it was also noted on our agenda online as well about reaching out for public comment.
Right. Thank you for that. That's right, as well as the front door.
Very good. Moving into our agenda, consideration of our meeting minutes. I think this is brief enough that we can handle this today. Is there a motion to adopt that the minutes as circulated, or are there any amendments there, too? Hearing no amendments. It's been moved to second.
Second.
Moved in second.
Mr. Chair, by name? I've just, given the complications of this sort of remote meeting, it would be really helpful if for each motion and seconding and individual votes, if we could ask people to identify themselves by name for the record. Please don't press "dos" because I really will embarrass myself.
So Commissioner Issler moves to approve the minutes, and Commissioner Lehman seconds the motion. All in favor will say aye.
Aye.
All in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, no. And the motion is adopted unanimously. If we have divided votes...
Apologies for that, but so far, I'd say that's... If that's the worst glitch we're going to experience today, we're in good shape.
Yeah, I have no idea what that is.
I wonder if it's Bill Downing's phone in that...
It looks like he's still connected from my end.
Okay. Very good. I was just going to say that if we have any divided votes today, then the Chair will call for them to be identified by Commissioner's name. Peter, budget update briefly?
Sure, I can be really brief with this. We continue to be in good shape, but again, the Attorney General's offices are largest and most variable cost, but that continues to come in more or less where we predicted. And so the legislative appropriations for that expense seem to be covering it. I would note that, obviously, I'm sure most, if not all, of you are aware that some terrible employment figures came out this morning. The worst unemployment numbers to date. It quadrupled the previous record from 1982. So I have no doubt that we are... I have no doubt that we're heading into some difficult economic times, which will inevitably have an impact on the state budget. So we will continue to be prudent and conservative with our oversight of our own budget. And we can all imagine the pressures that might come to bear going forward, but the present outlook is quite good for our budget, and we continue to monitor it.
So I would just raise the concern that I have that we're moving toward a special session that's going to focus on the legislature, on the budget. And one of the things that I'm worried about is whatever resources we have that are free will be scraped. And so one of the things I wanted to raise is where are we in terms of being able to bring a project manager on? Is that something we're going to be able to do in the relatively near future? And secondly, the worry that I have about the Transparency Fund.
Yeah, I'd be happy to address that and invite others to weigh in as well. We, as you may recall from the last meeting, we said goodbye to Kyle from the IT team, which is a key position, so we have... That recruitment is active. We hope to fill that with a worthy replacement soon. And we also are recruiting for the project manager position. There is potentially some uncertainty there because that was funded out of the out of the Transparency Fund and is a specific line item, budget item. I am reaching out to the Governor's Office and OFM to make the case that that was a specific legislative appropriation out of a dedicated fund and therefore should be sacrosanct from any potential veto approaches to trimming the budget. So I will keep you updated on how that goes. And I do share your worry, Commissioner Jarrett, about sweeping of any unspent funds we have and any funds that remain in the Transparency Account. We have, over the course of the fiscal year, identified needs with funds that were left at the end of the year. Things that we had identified were needs of the agency that we could spend money on. We wanted to be conservative, of course, until we knew for sure that we were in a place where we could do that. We are actively pursuing those things now, upgrading the phone system, for instance, upgrading the conference, the Commissioner Conference Room in particular, to get some more useful tables that would also give us greater flexibility for, as you know, we use it also for training and public and private staff meetings. So we're going to try to improve our operations in that way with some of those funds. So we do have plans to make good use of funds that we still have on the table in the very near term, and in fact, just yesterday, we had a discussion as a management team about making sure we make that a priority, because, again, I share your concern that any money left on the table could disappear quickly. The Transparency Fund, again, in my communications with the Governor's Office and OFM, I will make the case, continue to make the case that statutorily, those are dedicated funds to be used to implement House Bill 2938 in the operations of the PDC and that they are not to supplant the general funds for operations of the PDC. Of course, no past legislature can bind a future or current legislature, so that's always subject to being revisited. But I do think that there was a distinct spirit in which that fund was created, and we will continue to make the case that that money should be sacrosanct and be used for the purposes of the agency.
So one of the things that I would like to see us spending some time on during this next few months is having a better idea of how we would use that money so that there is something to push back on the legislature about. Here's what the cost of doing something different would be.
Yeah, I agree with you. As you know, we have an IT projects list and that is partly for that purpose and partly just our identified needs even before the Transparency Fund was created. So I agree with you. I think we had some confused messaging with the legislature on how some of that money might be spent and the ramifications and consequences thereof, so I think we have some work to do to clean that up.
That's really my point.
Yeah. Yeah, that is definitely an identified area where we have work to do, and we will try to get better understanding on the part of all of our stakeholders, including the legislature.
Fred, are you specifically thinking about the early work on the archive? And how we might nail down some estimates of what early costs would be?
Yes. I think that's... For me, that's, I think, one of our big priorities for the next couple of years is how do we how do we actually make that work? And I, you know, I think understanding what the technological strategy is, is important. I think there's other things that we need to be working on. You know, as we've discussed, David, I've been disappointed that we had our remote meeting with the California people canceled, and I think that's something that we need to push on. But I think there are opportunities there, and I would hate to see a sweep of the Transparency Fund taking away those opportunities.
Russ, do you have any comment on all of that?
Not really, only to echo, I guess, what Fred said.
Very good. And James? James, do you have any thoughts about what was just said? About projects? I don't know if he's listening at the moment.
My sidebar indicates he's quote-unquote "on hold," so I think he may...
Okay, that's fine. I just wanted to make sure we heard from staff on that, if that was desired. I guess if there's nothing further on that, we have we have had circulated to us the latest draft of the new interpretation. And I think the assumption is that that's still a work in progress, not quite ready for a vote today. Sean, would you like to make a brief presentation on that and certainly be open to any brief comments from commissioners about what they currently see?
Sure. Thank you. Thank you, Chair Ammons, and good morning, everyone. So yeah, I'll keep my comments brief. What we had, what you have in your materials today is an updated draft of the interpretation that we had originally proposed back in December. In previous meetings, we had wanted specific outreach to stakeholders.
Hey, Bill. Commissioner Downing, we have begun a conversation around the interpretation on principal purpose test. And Sean is giving us a brief overview. Intention is not to approve today, but to bring it forward for a wee bit of discussion and then move along. Sean, resume, please. Sean?
Sure. Yeah, so just to kind of recap where we are, we had an initial proposal... Sure. Yeah, so just to, just to kind of recap where we are, we had an initial proposal back in December. The commissioners wanted some more specific outreach, I guess, to get public comments or input on what we were proposing. You had heard from, we had some comments that were presented in a meeting a couple months ago by Dmitry Glitzen. I had sent those around again last week, just to refresh your memory on what he had provided orally. And then we also had some written comments that were, that were submitted by the Freedom Foundation. And you had seen those written comments. Those are in your meeting materials. Based on reviewing those comments, considering those as well as more kind of internal discussion, we had revised the original proposal. And those are the track changes that you see in the materials that you have before you today. And some of that hopefully is self-evident that, that some of those changes are, are in response to what we received as comments. But, you know, if I can characterize very generally about the comments that we received, without going into the specifics, there were, there were kind of two different perspectives on which direction we should go with this. And in regards to the, kind of the threshold percentage as an initial indicator of when an organization's activities might be triggering an analysis of primary purpose, we had kind of settled on a 30% threshold. And, and I wanted to be clear in response, especially to some of the comments, that we were not saying that that is a definite term or something that presumptively makes an organization required to register as a political committee or not, but really just more as a guide to give to potential filers as to, as to how they were to self-evaluate and determine when they should be considering looking at some of the additional factors and whether their activities really rise to the level of needing to, to register. So we had settled on 30%. You'll see from, from the comments, one perspective was that that was too low, and another perspective was that was too high. And I think, at least in a very general sense, that somewhat summarizes where the, where the two perspectives are on this. And that's, those were good perspectives to have. And I'm really thankful to get those comments and especially get those to the commissioners so you can see where, where, where there are differing views on this. And hopefully, it'll help to inform your decisions as well as to help us to clarify and make sure that the interpretation that we're proposing to you is, is clear to people out there. So I was very, very thankful to receive those. They were very helpful and, and I think did improve the, the language of the interpretation we have right now. With that, I'd be happy to answer some questions that commissioners have. But as the chair suggested, that if this is something that we're not going to decide now, that, that we can, we can have further discussion about that later as well.
Commissioners, Commissioner Jarrett, you had emailed a concern around the percentage. You want to say anything today on that?
I just, yeah, I just am persuaded at this point that 30% is, is way too high. That in my experience in working in organizations, primary purposes can be much, much less than that because you can have multiple primary purposes. I don't know what the right number is, but it's, I think, considerably less than 30%.
Do you think it's important to have a number as kind of a number to set off warning flags?
I'd like to have more conversation about that. I'm not sure that an explicit, as somebody who is, you know, always big on good measurement and management data, I'm not sure that this is a place where you actually want to have that. I think it, it varies based on the organization and exactly what, what the circumstances are. That said, I'm not, I'm not bound to that yet, but I think that's something that we need to have more conversation about.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions from commissioners? Hearing none, we will defer action on this item until, I can't say necessarily next meeting because I don't know that it will be on the agenda at that point. But in the future, shall we say, in the near-term future, we will revisit this and take action. Moving on to legislative update, our agenda, I'd like Sean and BG, Peter, to give thoughts on where we're at and what is, what is lost or hanging fire because of inaction on our bill. And if Fred and, and Russ would like to chime in as our, as the commissioners' liaisons to the legislature, I would welcome that as well. Who would like to start?
I'll kick it off and then invite everybody else to weigh in. We left a lot on the cutting room floor, obviously. Our, you know, our bill evolved, what had been our bill evolved over the course of the session. And some good ideas certainly got left behind. But I think that was done partly in recognition that there were some less good ideas that had gotten on the train and that we weren't so pleased about. But those good ideas live to see another day. So I would imagine we'd want to continue the conversation about, for instance, faux mailers or misleading endorsement and language. I know Representative Ty, who had proposed a bill on that and that whose language got incorporated into the PDC proposed legislation, continues to be interested in that. And Sean has had contact with her office, and we're going to continue those conversations. The F1 language that we had to clean up, how we define the, the information that's included in the F1, we can certainly live with things as they are. We thought that was, that would give us a little more flexibility. We'd like to continue, continue that conversation. I know the legislature continues to be interested in the idea of how staff F1 information, financial disclosure information, legislative staff information is treated. And they would like to continue that conversation as to what might happen there. And I won't presume to speak for them, but I think would like to see that, that conversation continue and for them to have a chance to potentially address that in legislation again. And then things like commissioner activities that you all might want to consider for a future session. So while we're disappointed that we didn't get the things that we had hoped, we're also, I think, relieved that some ideas that, that would have perhaps been detrimental to our mission were not passed into legislation and look forward to continuing those conversations. I guess in summary, I would say our mantra to some degree has been let's strike while the iron's hot. I think maybe we're learning that the iron has cooled a bit, but it does not mean that we don't continue to work hard to improve 4217A in whatever ways that we see fit and to, and to push ahead with our arguments with stakeholders of all types to, to explain why we, we think there are improvements to be made and what they are. With that, I'll defer to BG and Sean if they have anything to add.
BG, do you have anything?
No, I don't think so. Peter, Peter did suggest that Representative Ty's office reached out to us. I think that's a relationship that might very well be worth developing. She's interested in what the commission does. So I think, you know, as I said, developing that relationship could be really advantageous for the commission. That's all really I have to say.
Yeah. And as far as, far as me, I think Peter's covered pretty much everything unless there's some specific questions about any of the pieces. I think the, the bottom line that, that I would just like to reiterate is that the issues that we had proposed are still, are still open and something that we'd still probably recommend to pursue. There's nothing that changed in session about the false advertising, the definition of ballot propositions, or the F1 reorganization pieces that would, would suggest that, you know, those aren't good policies that we continue to pursue. Where the bill got hung up were on some of the other issues. Again, I can get into specifics if any members have questions about that. But we did have some resistance on the non-appropriation of the Transparency Fund and the Commissioner Activity sections of the, of the bill. And the, the other issue that was of importance to the legislature and became a part of our bill very early on, which is the publishing of or posting of F1 reports, is something, as Peter alluded to, that the legislature has expressed some initial interest in, in possibly engaging the commission and in looking to see if there, there may be a way of postponing that, the effect of that, especially in regards to the legislative staff, postponing the decision to post those potentially for, for another year. We don't have any specific requests from the legislature, but I just wanted to kind of, kind of tag that as something that we, we've heard some initial indicators that the, that members of the legislature might be, might be looking to get in touch with the commissioners about that. But we can, we can discuss that more once, once we have more specifics from, from the legislature.
I guess I would jump in and say that Sean did an absolutely tremendous job on working with the legislature on the foreign national bill. It, I mean, he spent days on that and ultimately it ended up to be a really doable bill for the, for the agency.
And BG, that will be the only bill that we're aware of that will require some rulemaking on our part?
Yeah. And thanks for bringing that up. What we're going to probably have to do is, we're in fact, meeting today on, we will be proposing an emergency rule initially just because of the timing. The agency won't have enough time to actually adopt a permanent rule just because of the timing of the rule process. So we will be working on an emergency rule, get that out there as quickly as we can because of the upcoming general election. And then we'll also be working on the, on the permanent rule at the same time. We're also looking at, you know, as, as we've been working with the commission on kind of trying to stay focused on specific items, you know, over the last year, we've worked really hard on the F1, on the application. We've involved stakeholders. So we want to see, are there things currently in the existing statute that we heard from stakeholders that we may be able to rewrite some rules, amend some rules? We just, we just don't know yet. So that's kind of where we are as far as rules right now. We are moving into a pretty big election, which, you know, takes, will be taking up a lot of our time. But that said, I don't know, Sean, anything else that, that you can think of?
No, I, I think with the, and thank you for mentioning the, the foreign national bill. Got to make sure that that is, that, that we discuss that. Again, any questions commissioners have about that, be happy to talk about. But yeah, that, that will take some, I think, some extensive-
Sorry to interrupt. This is Jana. I'm going to let somebody else in that's in the lobby and it's going to interrupt. I'm sorry.
Thanks, Jana.
Yeah. It's Kirk coming into the meeting. I just wanted to let you know before. There we go.
Unknown participant is now joining.
And then to remind everybody, we're a few minutes behind schedule on what we had.
Okay, if everybody can then go ahead and, go ahead, Sean.
Okay. Yeah, just there will be rulemaking that we'll need to do on the foreign national bill. And, and I think that, that will be of some considerable consideration by the, by the commissioners on how we're going to define what foreign national activities are. That's a, that's a fairly hot topic in campaign finance and nothing that has been definitively resolved either at the national level or at the state level. So we're, I wouldn't say uncharted waters, but there's a number of, of opinions out there and something that I, I think I'm, I'm excited to, to, to jump into and to try and figure out. So that, that should be some interesting discussion going forward, something you can look forward to in the next month or two with our, with our rulemaking.
Sean, what is the effective date of that bill?
It's 90 days after the, after the end of the regular session. So I think that's somewhere around mid-June. So as BG said, we'll have to get emergency rules in place, which doesn't mean we have to get them in, you know, anytime before June, but, but, but that, we, we want those in place. And then we have the legislative free, well, the, the freeze on, the election freeze, let's call it, on our rulemaking ability. So we want to get something on the books by, by June that would be, that would apply throughout the election season. And then after the election in November, then we can, we can adopt permanent rules. But that, that's kind of the playbook that we used last year when we had bills that became effective in the middle of, of an election cycle. June's a little bit better than July, which is what we had pack to pack on last year's, became effective just a couple days before the primary election. So this'll, this'll be a little bit better in the election cycle. But we'll be looking to propose emergency rules for you all to adopt. And in the next couple of months, we should be getting, starting to get drafts out for you on that.
Is that something that we should send a note out to all of the treasurers to let them know that this is coming so that they can start thinking through their processes of getting the certifications?
Yes.
Yeah. And Kim, Kim generally will do a lot of stakeholder work. It's, you know, we publish on our website, we contact the, contact everybody and, yeah.
I just think that getting that started, you know, earlier and letting them know that it's coming is really a gift to them.
Very much agree.
Yep.
The other thing, since I'm, since I'm talking, I want to just echo what BG said about Sean's work, especially on that bill, but just generally with the legislature. We had, as everyone knows, put a team together that included Russ and I and Sean and others and other half. And I'm getting an echo in here, but I just felt that what we did worked quite well this year. I wanted to say my appreciation for the Thursday meetings we had and the time to be able to strategize and follow through on action. A difficult session in some ways, but I think I think that was a cool, cool, sweet-
David, if you, hold on just a minute. I think we've all been muted in an effort to eliminate that echo. So I think everybody will have to individually unmute themselves as they speak.
Yeah, I'm not sure what happened. Commissioner Jarrett-
I was just inviting Fred Fred and Russ if they had any any session comments that they'd like to make.
This session was such a such a weird session. Sorry, I hear echo still too. You guys hear echo?
Yeah, everybody should mute except the person talking.
So I, can you hear me now? Yeah. So the session was such a weird session in so many ways, and I thought we have to be, I think it would be prudent to not draw too many conclusions until we have more information. Clearly, with the virus at the end of the session, all bets are off on everything. But even before that, I think it was pretty clear that that some of our challenge with the legislature was due in no small part to the lack of or miscommunication on our role as a quasi judicial agency, specifically with regard to a particular case that we dealt with at the very end of session. And it was it was clear that that miscommunication or lack in communication created a whole bunch of misunderstandings and problems that manifested itself in frankly, a kind of a bizarre barrage of weird legislative action in the very end. So I just think that we had a, I think after the virus, because nobody's thoughts are anything other than the virus really right now, and our reaction to it, I think after that, I look forward to Fred and I or anybody getting together with some of the legislators and others and and really kind of do a debrief. I don't think that's possible until all this stuff with the virus kind of settles down. But that's my thought. Fred, your thoughts?
Well, I'll just add what I said in echo, and that is, is that I really thought Sean did a really nice job. And I really appreciated the staff and the fact that we were able to have weekly meetings and then go forth and present a, you know, united front with the legislature. And I think we did as well as we could have hoped in the end. I think there was some miscommunication. I take a certain responsibility for part of that. But the archive is an issue that we need to work. I think the other comment echoing what I said earlier is, we need to actually get our plan together for the next legislative session in the next six weeks or so. And I think hopefully, we'll get to the point where we can actually have some some discussions with the legislature on a face to face basis and be able to lay some of that out over the summer. But I think one of the problems that we had in this legislative session was that we weren't ready soon enough, and that we didn't have the time to be able to have the rich conversations that we needed to have, so that there was a level of understanding. And I think that lack of understanding led us to some miscommunication.
Commissioner Ammons, we need you to unmute yourself.
Is that unmuting?
There you go.
Okay, it still says J G on here. So one one final word. It, I want to remind the commissioners that the next meeting is the last opportunity to do anything other than what is on autopilot as regards to the legislative staff in F1 being available online. We had passed a motion that said we will hold off until May 1 to to allow those to be seen online, giving the legislature an opportunity to take action if they wish for another alternative or for a carve out. They did, they did not pass a bill doing that. So seems to me we have three alternatives. One is to let the let our previous motion take full effect on May 1. That the legislature did have their opportunity to to be heard on the matter and did not pass legislation. Second would be to pause this for until after the next session, which I believe is what some key legislators are going to be asking us to do. And then third would be to actually create a carve out for legislative staffers. So those are the three options that I see that we'll be looking at at our next meeting. So I wanted to we need to be ready to make that decision or nondecision, if you will, if we if we stay on the current trajectory. So if there are no further comments, I will call that part of the meeting to a close. We've moved now into modification requests. At this point, I would I would open this portion of the hearing. For the record, the date is March 26. The time is 10:30 a.m. We're are meeting as a commission remotely, and the hearing is being recorded. I am Chair David Ammons. And I will, I am enjoy, excuse me, I am joined by Vice Chair Russ Lehman, Commissioners Bill Downing, Nancy Isilis, Fred Jarrett, and we have staff also present. And we are conducting this hearing under the authority of RCW 3405, the Administrative Procedures Act, and relevant EDC statutes and rules. Those who are on our docket today have been notified of their of their ability to participate. And I believe all are declining that opportunity and will stand on the record that we have. At this point, I would invite members of our compliance team to to come online. And I think Fox and Tabitha are going to be our two main presenters. Who would like to go first? Our first case is Jeffrey Swan, a candidate for Superior Court Judge Yakima County. And this is a new modification request.
Thank you, Chair Ammons. This is Fox Blackhorn, Delaware, Comptess, coordinator. I'll be presenting Jeffrey Swan and then Tabitha Towne, that I'm also due this, and Tabitha Black, that will be called next month. Chair Ammons, could you mute your microphone? I'm getting feedback.
Yes.
Thank you. Great, thank you. So Jeffrey Swan, as the chair mentioned, is a candidate for Yakima County Superior Court. As you know, the legislature passed a bill which allowed for categorical exemptions for, among other offices, judges. Jeffrey Swan is running for as a candidate, but is not a current incumbent or appointee, and is requesting that the commission grant a modification to not disclose the residential address due to the nature of the position. And while the categorical exemption does not apply to candidates, he is a publicly appointed criminal defense attorney or a public defender, which is also not covered by the categorical exemption, but shares the same safety concerns and states that he should be afforded the same consideration as sitting judges and prosecutors. Mr. Swan has agreed to recuse himself if a conflict of interest should arise between his duties as a superior court judge and his family home. And I'm available for any questions. Oh, Chair Ammons, can you unmute now?
Thank you. So to be clear, this is not part of the permissible class of people that are exempted by statute from reporting their residential address?
That is correct. It's for these offices are not covered. And while prosecutors are, public defenders are not covered by the category exemption. But it is within the discretion of the commission to grant this reporting modification.
Are there questions or comments from the commissioners? Or is there a motion?
I have a couple of questions.
Are we gonna have to do this every time?
Yeah, I think so. I'm wondering if Fox, I don't know if you or Sean, if you're still on, if you could answer the question, did the legislature consider, when they decided on the categorical exemption for judges, did they consider candidates for judges? And then the second part of that is, why were prosecutors, I mean, I'm asking because I I don't know the answer. Why were prosecutors included but public defenders not? I don't know if anybody knows the answer to those questions.
Commissioner Lehman, this is this is Sean. I'll just jump in. I don't have anything particular in my knowledge about the legislative history or intent behind the inclusion of candidates, or why public defenders were were not included in that. To be honest, I don't recall the 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 testimony on that and whether the Defenders Association was took a position on on that bill or not. But but as far as the candidates, more specifically, I don't have any indication where the legislative intent is from that. That doesn't preclude the commission from, you know, being able to interpret that to include candidates. And surely, there would be, there'd be some argument to be made that if one is simply a candidate for a judge and filing accordingly, then if they were to win, then they would be in the same position as a judge, and therefore it would be a the the policy would would still be served, it would seem, to include candidates or not. But but I don't have anything specific for you on that.
This is Peter. I'll weigh in and just to remind everybody that in terms of legislative history, this was an agency request bill that made that change to exempt prosecutor, sheriffs, and judges. And I attended or monitored, I believe, all of the testimony or close to all the testimony on that bill. And I don't recall the issue ever coming up about candidates or about public defenders from public defenders or others. I don't remember.
Can anyone hear me? This is John Meter.
Yes, John.
Okay. The statute in my reading is for elected prosecutors, not for individual deputies. I believe that's just as if the it's for sheriffs, for the elected sheriffs, not for all deputy sheriffs. So that's why it says prosecutor. They're talking about the elected prosecutor.
David, I got one, just one more comment. Because this person is not included in the statutory exemptions, and because according to the what I affectionately call the Downing Rule, which was in place when when I joined the commission, that no specific showing of a threat or injury is included, but merely a generalized concern, I can't support a modification this
Are there any further comments? Hearing none. Yes.
So for this modification, there's also a couple additional concerns that I didn't raise previously, and I want to make sure part of your consideration. So this request is being presented by a candidate for an office who would receive it if elected, but if not granted, the modification would have to disclose that address. And then the category categorical exemption would would not apply in that in for that position. And then also, because this is brought as a personal safety request, even if generalized, part of 1195 is that commission staff and all materials that are submitted or prepared for the hearing, when it relates to a personal safety concern, are exempt from public records disclosure. And it has to be determined at the hearing that disclosure of the information would present a reasonable risk or a risk to a reasonable person or something to that effect. And so what we do also need to determine whenever we're bringing up a personal safety concern is whether staff are supposed to exempt the application materials after the date of the hearing, because they are exempt up to the date of the hearing. And that's why we send it under separate cover. Another part that we should consider is the commission has the authority, if you deem to grant this or any other modifications today, to grant it for their term of office. Or if they're an executive state officer without a term, then up to three years. And so while we're considering these, there's also just those two additional considerations we wanted to raise for today's reporting modifications.
Is there a motion? Commissioner Lehman?
I move that we
Motion maker.
Given what I just said, I move that we deny the modification request in this case.
Thank you. Is there a second? The chair would second. Further discussion? The motion by Commissioner Lehman is that the commission deny the partial reporting modification as requested on the basis that literal application of the law would not cause a manifestly unreasonable hardship on the applicant, and that limited modification would frustrate the purposes of the act. Is there further discussion on the motion?
I will, I will oppose the motion. It it seems to me that the line between being a judge and being a candidate is a relatively porous one. And having some experience with what public defenders have to go through that is similar to what prosecutors have to go through, I think there's a manifest issue here. So I will vote, I will vote against the amendment or the motion.
Are there further comments?
I just want to say that the the effect of granting a modification request in this case, under this circumstances, is putting us in the place of the legislature. The legislature had this specific issue in front of them. They made their decision, and they decided to not include candidates. And for us to then step in and give modification, saying we know better than the legislature, which I think is true sometimes, in this case, would set a heck of a precedent. And I'm not quite sure how we would not use that same logic to do a number of things that we think the legislature didn't accurately legislate on. So that's my argument for the motion.
Sorry, Dave, you're muted again.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Thank you. Are there any other comments before we take a vote on this? It's always permissible to make a motion in the affirmative, which would supersede the the denial motion. Not having heard that, I'll call for the question. I would ask for commissioners to vote by I would ask for commissioners to vote by individual at this point. Commissioner Layman, would you start?
I vote yes, I move.
Brett?
No.
Bill? Is Bill on the line? Nancy? Is Nancy on the line?
Yeah, I just, I just unmuted myself. Yes.
Yes, on the motion.
Downey is on the line, he needs to unmute himself.
And Bill? Bill, are you hearing us? Hearing none, the motion passes three votes to one, with one commissioner not voting. Who is presenting next case? Lynda Hamilton?
Chair Ammons, if I may, if I heard Janek correctly, Commissioner Downing is on, muted.
Commissioner Downing just emailed me, he voted yes, and he's trying to-
Thank you. Thank you. The motion passes four commissioners to one. And-
Jenna, we may need to manually unmute him. If he's participating by phone, it may be difficult.
Yeah, I can't. I'm trying to get information right now on how to do that. I can't do it.
Thank you.
Thank you. And do we need to make note that an order will be sent on this? First, how will the requister learn of our action?
Absolutely, Chair Ammons, an order will be sent.
Within 30 days. Thank you so much. Who is presenting on Lynda Hamilton?
Thank you, Commissioner Ammons. I'm getting feedback. Oh. Okay.
Thank you. I have not sworn you in specifically for this. Both of you were online earlier for the brief adjudicative procedures, and I did then. But for purposes of this proceeding here, I would ask that those who are presenting identify themselves and take a note.
Go ahead, Tabitha.
Fox?
Fox Blackhorn, compliance, coordination.
And Tab? Very good. Anyone else presenting today?
Jennifer is.
Is she online right now?
Yes, Commissioner Ammons, this is Jennifer Hanson.
Thank you.
I will be presenting the two-party modification request for the state party.
Thank you so much. I would ask the three of you to raise your right hand. And do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you've given today's proceedings will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. Thank you. And so, Tabitha, if you would proceed with, in the matter of Lynda Hamilton, professional staff, Office of Financial Management, and I understand this is also, there's certain concerns around this of a safety nature, and so we will leave it to your discretion how much to say for the public record, and then we'll be open to a motion on the request for modification.
Okay, so-
Chair Ammons, can you mute?
This is an annual report covering the year 2019 for Lynda Hamilton. This is a new request requesting personal residence real property to be exempt due to a safety concern. And there is a order of protection through Thurston County.
Chair Ammons, can you unmute now?
Lordy, I'll learn eventually. Are there any questions of clarification from the commission? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion.
This is us. I move that, David, I think you need to mute again until you are ready. I move that the commission grant the partial reporting modification as requested on the basis that little application of the law would cause manifestly unreasonable hardship on the applicant, and that the limited modification would not frustrate the purposes of the act.
I would second that motion.
And I'm wondering if you want to include for the term of the office held, so that she doesn't have to come, well, she's a staffer, so what would we do with the time limitation on this staff?
Up to three years.
So, would the maker and the seconder agree that this should be a three-year exemption from listing of address? Another way you could handle it, or is until the no-contact order is lifted?
I would feel more comfortable with that, with limited, based on the duration of the no-contact order.
Is that amendment acceptable to Commissioner Issis?
Yes, although I didn't make the motion.
You were the second, that you were the seconder?
I don't believe we had a second.
I second it.
Thank you so much. And you're seconding the amended motion to allow this to continue until such time as the no-contact order is lifted?
That is correct.
And if I may, Chair Ammons, there's also the personal safety concern that underlies this reporting modification. And so, if you accept it, staff could use direction on what to do with these records, and whether they will be exempted or disclosable under Public Records Act.
Thank you. Thank you, Fox. I believe that that would be the intent of the commission. Are there further comments? Hearing none, all in favor will, to the motion to grant the request will say aye.
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 No. And there are five commissioners voting aye, and zero commissioners voting no. Thank you. We will move now into the renewals. Excuse me. And we have four. And I would suggest that we hear a description of these matters, and if it is agreeable to the commission that we have a unified vote that would apply to each of the four, and if you have any, that you would like to draw out of that consent agenda, that certainly would be in order too. So, Barry Seibert, city council member, city of Clyde Hill, is the first one on our agenda.
Thank you, Chair Ammons, this is Fox Blackhorn presenting. So Barry Seibert is requesting a renewal of the reporting modification that exempts him from disclosing the business and other governmental customers that paid $12,000 or more during calendar year 2019 to Tootsie Roll Industries. He stated that neither he nor his spouse has an ownership interest of 10% or more, but Mr. Seibert is a director of Tootsie Roll. He is not involved in the day-to-day operations of the company, and does not have direct access to customer information. Mr. Seibert stated that Tootsie Roll is an international company engaged in manufacture and sale of confectionery products, and indicated that compiling the customer information would be a hardship on the company. He stated that the candy industry is highly competitive, and that Tootsie Roll considers its customer list to be proprietary in nature. Mr. Seibert reported no payments from the city of Clyde Hill to Tootsie Roll Industries in 2019, has agreed to recuse himself if a matter came before him involving a conflict of interest between Tootsie Roll and the city of Clyde Hill. And Mr. Seibert has reviewed his initial reporting modification request and any subsequent renewal requests, and certified that there are no changes to the facts related to this request. I'm available for any questions.
Are there questions on this case?
I have one question. It looks like the person, I guess I'm unclear whether the person is still in elective office, because the term ended in the end of 19.
That is a great question. Let me pull up the application questionnaire. Yes, so he no longer holds public, oh.
I'm sorry, I was going to answer the question, Fox, but you can-
Thank you. I appreciate the assist. So yes, he no longer holds public offices of the end of 2019, and has no intention of serving in the future. So stated in the application modification.
Hearing no further questions, would the presenter who's doing, Judge Matthew Williams, now present?
Yes, I'm also handling Matthew Williams. Matthew Williams is a current Superior Court Judge in King County, whose term expires in January of 2021, and is requesting, had previously requested a personal residence exemption, but is now no longer needing that due to the categorical exemption. But is requesting a renewal of a reporting modification that would exempt him from disclosing the business customers that paid $12,000 or more during calendar year 2019 to International Sensor Systems Incorporated. Judge Williams serves on the Board of Directors for International Sensor Systems, Inc., or ISI. They manufacture hybrid thick-film components that are used in various specialized commercial processes. Judge Williams has confirmed that ISI has no governmental customers, and that while he is a general partner of a limited partnership set up by his parents' estate that owns the majority of the shares of ISI, he has no direct interest in the company. He is not involved in the day-to-day operations of the business, but does, but he does have access to the business customers. He says he consults with the president of ISI and the other members of the board on a strategic direction of the company. Judge Williams stated that ISI does not do business in Washington. He stated that disclosing the business customer list would give a competing manufacturing company an unfair competitive advantage. Judge Williams stated that the list of customers of ISI has no bearing on his duties as a King County Superior Court Judge, does no business in Washington State, and the Board of Directors has passed a resolution that they will do no business in Washington State. Judge Williams disclosed the city creditor, oh, the personal residence is no longer relevant, excuse me. Judge Williams has agreed to recuse himself if a matter came before him involving a conflict of interest between his personal residence and ISI or the King County Superior Court. Judge Williams has reviewed his initial reporting modification request and any subsequent renewal request, and has certified that there are no changes to the facts related to the request. And I must apologize, it looks like in the cover sheet there's still some remnants of the previous personal residence, and that is not being requested due to the categorical exemption in this case.
Is the judge a continuing member of the bench up there?
He is.
And further, I would take note that Commissioner Downing probably knows this judge and does not feel that participating in today's activity would be a problem.
It's true, although I have to say that I'm so old and so long retired now that some of your judges aren't that well-known to me, as you know him.
You're forever youthful. Hearing no further questions or comments on the request by Judge Williams, we will move to Riley Club, city council member, city of Walla Walla.
Thank you, Chair Ammons. I will be presenting for Riley Club. This is an annual report, and it's a renewal with no change regarding income and ownership interest. And Riley is stating that he would like the exemption from disclosing the business customers that paid $12,000 2019 to Loden Schoolhouse Corporation. Loden Schoolhouse Corporation has no real estate and no business within the city of Walla Walla, except for one, less than 1% of retail sales. The ownership interest is 10% or more, but he has no voting power and no control over the management decisions of the company. And Mr. Club is stating that this is a global market for wine made in Walla Walla, and that this market has become extremely competitive over the last 20 years, and that disclosing the customer list would invite new-
Unknown participant is now exiting.
-from other wineries. He has agreed to, sorry, my computer just jumped around. He has agreed to recuse himself, and has reviewed his initial reporting modification request and subsequent renewal request, and there are no changes to the facts related to his request.
Is he a continuing member of the city council? And do we know when his term is through?
Yes, he is. Through December 21.
If the presenters going forward would call to the commission's attention when we can use the longer-than-one-year authority that we now have to make this for the life of the term up to four years? For instance, Judge Williams, do we know, should that motion include that multi-year exemption?
Well, in that particular case, the current term expires in January of 2021, so it would still be one year just due to the length of the term in that particular instance.
Thank you.
Oh, that's the only one I've done in this group. Oh, Barry Seibert is out of office, so never mind. Thank you.
And so, the current one just being discussed, the Walla Walla council member, that could be for the duration of the current term.
Correct.
Very good. If, are there any questions from the commission? Hearing none, if we could move on to William Allen White, Commissioner Grant, County Hospital District 1?
All right. Thank you, Chair Ammons. So, William Allen White, Commissioner Grant, County Hospital District 1. Current term expires December 2022, so if you deem to grant this, you could grant it out through the end of the term. William is requesting an exemption to not report the business customers that paid $12,000 or more during calendar year 2019 to Western Polymer Corporation, where his spouse Lynn Townsend serves as CEO with 100% ownership interest. However, she sold all of her interest in the company effective February 28, 2019, and has retired except for some minor consulting- twenty-nineteen, um, and has retired except for some minor consulting related to the sale and transfer. Uh, Mr. White has stated that he has no ownership in the, interest in the company and is not involved in the day-to-day operations, um, that Western Polymer Corp. is a privately-held company and that a list of its customers is not publicly available. Um, Mr. White stated that the food-grade potato starch industry is highly competitive and publishing the reportable business customers would put Western Polymer Corp. at a serious competitive disadvantage. He stated that the Grant County Hospital District does no business with Western Polymer Corp., um, has made no payments, um, during calendar year 2019. Uh, Mr. White has agreed to recuse himself if a matter came before him involving a conflict of interest between Western Polymer Corp. and Grant County Hospital, District One. I'm available for any questions.
Is, uh, is his, do you know what the length of his term is?
Uh, yes, it goes through December twenty-two.
So, um, I should ask the commissioners, uh, if it will be our, our standing policy absent any need to otherwise, um, find that, that we will grant multi-year exemptions so they don't have to come back each and every year for a modification? Uh, is there any objection to that, that way of proceeding?
That sounds reasonable.
Hearing none, hearing none, let's do that, uh, and, and I thank the, the staff for, for reminding us of this option that, that was recently given to us. And so we will, we will just request that they continue to, to bring that to our attention. Um, so, uh, at this time, I would, uh, call for a motion on these four, uh, to, to, uh, to deal with these four renewal requests.
Well, this, this is Bill Downey. If I'm audible.
Yes.
We have a nice, we have a nice commodity theme running through these, potato starch, Walla Walla wine, and Tootsie Rolls. Uh, that's not, that's not the reason for taking them all together. I think there's, uh, other similarities as well. In, in each instance, for each of the four cases, um, I would move that we determine that literal application of the chapter would work a manifestly unreasonable hardship, um, on those individuals or the companies, uh, that are involved and that, uh, limited modification would not frustrate the purposes of the chapter. So I would move, so I would move that we grant the requests on that basis.
Uh, Judge Downing moves, uh, that the four requests be, uh, approved, uh, on the basis that, um, I don't have the language in front of me, but that it would not frustrate the purposes of the act, uh, to, and that, uh, literal application would, uh, be a hard manifesting hardship. Uh, is there, thank you, Commissioner Jarrett, I believe that was, um, and so, uh, further comments? All, all in favor of the four, uh, requests, uh, modifications, uh, will say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, no?
No.
And who, who voted no?
Russ.
Uh, Russ Lehman, uh, did you want one pulled out or do you want to, um, um, just vote no on that motion?
Well, that's a good question, actually, because I, I feel a little bit differently about one or two than I do about all, but since it appears as though the, uh, commission, um, a, a, a majority of the commission, uh, would approve all them, I think it's probably just simpler doing it this way. But I, I would say though that, um, I know for me, and I, I don't know about for any other relatively newer commissioner, for me, uh, the issue about renewals has always been a challenging one to me because, uh, I, I don't feel comfortable voting yes on some renewals merely because they're renewals and some former commission voted yes. On the other hand, I do very much respect, uh, the former commission's rulings. I, I, so I, I'm in a bit of an awkward, a difficult position on some of these. Uh, I, I would not have granted some of these initially, so they wouldn't be a renewal now. Um, so I, I, I'm, I'm just putting that out there is that it's a, it's a challenge on renewal issue, especially for someone who has only been around a year and a half.
Thank you, uh, Commissioner Lehman, appreciate that, that, that thought. Uh, are there further, uh, discussions or questions? Hearing none, the chair will call for the vote. Um, uh, all in favor will say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, we heard, we heard from Commissioner. So I'm hearing, uh, four commissioners in favor and Commissioner Lehman opposed. Hearing no objection to the chair's hearing, um, we will, uh, we will declare those, uh, renewals approved and, uh, an order will be sent out within thirty days informing them of our decision. Um, we move to, uh, Jen. Now for a presentation of the, um, state party requests and, um, these, these, Jennifer, these need to be done annually, there's no, no, uh, they, they have been done for years and years. Um, is there, is there a reason why we need to do them annually? Is that, uh, that, that's my question.
Um, I, I'll defer to John Meter, but I don't believe that the new tool that the commission has to grant modifications for more than one term applies to anything beyond, um, F1 requests. Um, these are not related to F1s, they are related to the campaign reporting that the parties do for their exempt and non-exempt accounts, both at the state and the federal level. So maybe we can take a moment to let John Meter weigh in on that.
That's my understanding as well.
Very good. Uh, Jennifer, would you proceed? We'll, we'll hear these, uh, together since they are, uh, essentially, uh, identical requests.
Yes, that is correct, that they are essentially identical. Um, the commission heard last year, the, kind of the historical background, I will limit that for this year unless, um, Commissioner Isserlis has additional questions. She's the only one on the commission that wasn't, um, here last year to be part of that conversation, I believe. Um, the state parties report to both the PDC in Washington State as well as at the FEC, the Federal Election Commission, and their request is related to a duplication of information that they disclose at both the state and federal level. Um, just in general, there are certain types of, of restrictions that are, that the Federal Election Commission has on state parties and, uh, the federal, uh, version of parties as well. Um, and then of course, our state in Washington, we have additional restrictions on who can make contributions to our state parties and who can, how that money can be spent. And so the, the, uh, idea behind these requests is that literal application with the requirements under campaign reporting for political committees, so C-3 reports showing campaign contributions being received and deposited, and then C-4 reports, um, being disclosed. So two, uh, RCW forty-two seventeen, A, uh, two thirty-five and two forty for reference there, that literal application with disclosing all the detailed information about how money is being spent, how it's being transferred, um, that the, because the requirements for the state party at the, for the federal level is different than at the state level, it creates a modi-, uh, a hardship for the state parties to disclose, um, the differences there. Uh, something to note is that these are historical, um, as Commissioner Lehman just mentioned, the commission has heard these and granted these in the past. That doesn't mean that you have to grant them today, of course. Um, but the, um, we're talking back into the, the nineties, um, for some of these, um, considerations. The, um, the, the application of this modification would not, um, keep the parties from disclosing, um, the information that is, um, at the heart of our agency's mission, which is money that is coming in to be spent on candidates and political committees, candidates both at this, uh, Washington State level and local level, and then political committees. Instead, what it allows them to do is to limit the, uh, detail that they have to disclose for transfer of funds that are not related to that kind of activity. So, um, that's kind of it in a nutshell. Um, there's some information in the cover sheet that relate to Levin funds and contribution limits and other things. Um, I will try to answer any questions that I have. I know Commissioner Jarrett in particular brought up some interesting topics last year, um, regarding some of this, and, and I don't want to spend too much time if we don't need to, but I also want to make sure that, um, Commissioner Isserlis has the information she needs to make a, a determination today. So I will limit it there, um, unless the commission has additional questions. Um, these, both of these requests would be for the reporting that's being done for 2020. So there's a couple of reports that have already been disclosed. If the commission determines to not grant this request, staff would go back to the state parties and ask them to amend those reports to include the detail instead. Otherwise, this would be good until the end of the election, uh, year 2020.
Are there questions by the commission? Uh, Jennifer, would, would, um, the standard motion for granting modification as requested be appropriate or should it be sta-, should it be stated any differently?
Um, I, I will again defer to John Meter if he has any objections, but in the past, the commission has been able to give a, a motion that just grants the modification requested, and this would be for both the, uh, Washington State Democratic Party, um, and the Washington State Republican Party.
And that sounds fine to me.
Uh, he- hearing that, I would entertain a motion to grant the modification as requested.
I move that the commission grant the partial reporting modification as requested.
Right, seconds.
Commissioner Lehman has moved that the commission grant the partial reporting modification as requested. Uh, Commissioner Jarrett seconds the motion. Uh, are there further, uh, comments or questions? Hearing none, uh, all in favor will say aye.
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 All opposed will say no.
No.
And who voted no?
No.
I'm sorry, I'm not hearing who the no vote is.
I think it was your echo, David.
Ah, yeah, yeah.
You said, you said, all opposed vote no.
Supposed, supposed. Okay. Um, where the echoes are coming from. Um, but at any rate, uh, I, I will declare that, uh, the, the requests of the State Democratic Central Committee and the Washington State Republican Party, uh, be granted, uh, and, uh, that it passes five to zero. Thank you. Um, we have on our agenda, thank you, we have on our agenda, um, the reporting modification process itself. Um, I would suggest that, excuse me, that's been, uh, kicked around for, um, some months, uh, for our, uh, consideration, the previous chair Levinson, uh, brought that forward in, in the spirit of trying to, uh, streamline the meetings and in the spirit of using, uh, new, new, um, authority from the legislature so, uh, we can do things as we have been doing, which is basically the, the commission, uh, handles all of the modification requests or, uh, more could be, uh, diverted to, um, the presiding officer format that is used for brief adjudicative procedures right now. Um, I don't know if anyone has any comments at the moment, otherwise we will defer this, uh, particular, uh, conversation to a later date.
Uh, David, uh, uh, I, I don't want to, uh, I don't think it's, it, it, it's, it's not on the agenda for any kind of extended conversation now, and I, I'm totally with that. At the same time, I, um, just in my short time in the commission, we kicked it down the road a number of times. So I wonder if there's a better way to go about this, because I think all of us want to, uh, find a way, if there is a way, to make this a cleaner, quicker process. Maybe there is in a way, and, uh, I, you know, I don't, I don't know, but I wonder if maybe, um, we could have, uh, two people on the commission think about this and maybe come back to us, the commission, at our next meeting with a real proposal, because otherwise, I think we just wind up doing this every month. We, we want to do something, but just even talking about it will be a, a long process and that kind of defeats the purpose. So I, I guess I should, I, I would suggest, um, um, uh, two people from the commission can come back to us at the next meeting with us.
Uh, that sounds reasonable to me, Commissioner Lehman. I do know that, uh, it, that the commission, uh, decided to wait until after the new, uh, legislation went into effect to see, we know that many of our previous modification requests had to do with, with safety concerns by the whole variety of people that were brought into, uh, the legislation that we requested. Um, that there are, the grid that, that you have in your packets, uh, and previously probably had as well, uh, that grid was created by Commissioner Levinson, as I recall, with what appeared to be the, um, potential options from, from doing what we're doing now to essentially having the presiding officer do most of, of, of the, uh, requests, uh, kicking to the full commission any that were, that, that warranted that. Um, and, uh, um, former Commissioner Levinson, uh, included the pluses and minuses of the, of the various approaches because there are trade-offs. And, um, so, um, do I hear two commissioners that would like to, uh, to, I guess, come with a preferred option to the next, uh, to the next gathering?
Well, I ha-
I'll volunteer.
And I'll volunteer too, since I-
Um, yeah, he- hearing no objection from the commissioners, that's, that's what we'll do, and the, the subcommittee will report back, uh, at the next meeting or, or at their earliest convenience, and maybe, maybe if you even want to put something, uh, I don't, John Meter, can we do that? Can they send us, um, their, their thinking, uh, via email to the full commission ahead of, uh, when we actually vote on it?
As long as there's no discussion, can provide information.
Oh, okay, I just, I think that if, if the subcommittee can do that ahead of our, our next meeting, uh, that would give us a chance to, to read their, their, um, their white paper and, um, give us a little head start.
David?
Yes.
I would just, I would just, as input to the, to the team, um, I'm very strongly in favor of option one, as it was proposed, because I think that gives us a way of being able to make things work more efficiently, but also to keep the commission in, in, engaged so that there's a feedback mechanism, which is one of the things that I try to bring back a number of times, so, worth what it's, uh, for what it's worth.
Thank, thank you very much. Any other comments?
Chair Ammons, it's, it's Peter, I just wanted to add that as the subcommittee, uh, delves into this, that we as staff stand by to help in any way we can, and I, Jennifer, at the risk of volunteering, you, uh, has a great deal of experience with this and would be happy to help, um, either individually or collectively with me and Sean, BG, Kim as needed, and, um, I'm sure Fox and others would too. So just feel free to work through me so we can coordinate maybe a conference call or whatever is needed, but we stand by to help.
Great, thank you.
And, and this is Jennifer, and I am happy to be volunteered for this specific task. It's very important to me, so.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Thank you, willing participants. Thank you, willing participant there. We move now to review and reconsideration of two previous enforcement actions. And Fox, I have you down as presenter. Are you doing both of these?
Actually, the first case will be presented by Tabitha Townsend and the second by Jennifer Hansen.
Very good, thank you so much. You've all been sworn in, and so the first matter is Tony Overmeyer, who was a candidate for Des Moines Park and Recreation Commissioner in King County. My understanding from the record is that she has passed away sadly, and so if we could hear briefly that and then quickly deal with this matter.
Of course, thank you, Chair. This is Tabitha Townsend, and I'm presenting Tony Overmeyer's reconsideration. As you stated, she was a 2019 candidate for Des Moines Park and Recreation Commissioner position and had been found in violation of RCW 4217A 205, 210, and 215 for failure to timely file campaign registration with the PDC within two weeks of becoming a candidate or no later than June 3, 2019. This was at a brief enforcement hearing held on January 23, 2020, where an order imposing a $500 penalty was entered, and the staff is asking the commission to reconsider this matter today, as we have been informed by the prior candidate's family that she did pass in February of this year.
Thank you. Any questions from the commission? Hearing none, the chair would entertain a motion to reconsider its final decision in PDC case number, tell me the case number. Thank you.
I'll go ahead and make a motion in case number 59761, that the commission vacate, reconsider and vacate the previous order.
I will second, but John, can the motion actually include reconsideration and a vacation?
Yeah, I will write up the order for the commission. You are reconsidering the initial decision. I'll make sure that the English works.
The usual manner in which we handle this is to vote to reconsider, and presuming that passes, then further action is taken, and in this case, it sounds like vacating the original order. So the chair would offer that as a friendly amendment, that we vote just on reconsideration. All in favor of reconsideration will say aye.
I don't, you have a second to that motion. This is Ross, I will second that motion as amended.
Thank you. So all in favor of that will say aye.
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 And opposed, no. And hearing none, that motion to reconsider passes, and the subsidiary motion is to vacate, I will entertain that after reconsideration, vacate the final decision.
So moved, I move that the order be vacated.
Is.
Second.
Been moved by Commissioner Lehman that the order be vacated and seconded by Commissioner Downing. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion to vacate will say aye.
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 All opposed will say no.
Say no.
And that motion is approved five to nothing. The second matter is Martin Morgan, candidate for city council member, city of Kirkland. If the staff would present.
So Commissioner Ammons, this particular applicant would like to participate, and so I believe Janet is going to try to call him and patch him in.
I'm trying to do that right now.
Thank you.
Unknown participant is now joining.
Hi, Mr. Morgan.
Mr. Morgan, are you on the line?
If you can hear us, I believe you need to hit star six to unmute yourself.
Mr. Morgan, can you hear us?
I'm showing that Mr. Morgan is on the line, but he's muted right now.
Mr. Morgan, this is Commission Chair David Ammons. You are on with us at consideration of your request. And if you wish to be heard, you will need to be sworn in, so I need to be able to hear you. At this point, I would ask staff to present the matter.
It doesn't look like Mr. Morgan has unmuted himself. Mr. Morgan, if you can hear this, you'll need to hit star six on your telephone to unmute.
Chair Ammons, while we're waiting, just as a technical matter, we can unmute people within the organization, but we can't with an external call like that, so we need to rely on the caller. I think it's worked, no, apparently not.
No.
We may need to call back, or perhaps Janet, maybe you could give a direct call and discuss unmuting, and then patch Mr. Morgan in.
Sure, I'm going to mute myself, give me just a second.
Thank you.
Peter, per our discussion earlier, do you think it's prudent for me to describe a little bit about Mr. Morgan's request for in-person?
Well, let's give it a minute if the commission will indulge us, just because I'd like him to have the benefit of the full discussion, if we can get him participating.
Great, thank you very much, I'll wait.
Thank you.
The chair would suggest that the commissioners get up and walk around for about 30 seconds, do a little stretching.
So commissioners, but not the staff? So don't anybody move.
If you turn off your camera, Jennifer, nobody knows whether you're stretching or
Commissioner?
Yes.
So I've got hold of the participant, he's going to try and join the actual Teams meeting, let's give him a moment. For some reason, it's not letting him unmute his phone, so it's going to be just a second.
Janet or Peter, we have a matter coming up where.
Unknown participant is now exiting.
Go ahead.
Is the CPA organization standing by to be contacted?
They are, and they did express some flexibility, which we're thankful.
Thank you.
Let's give him just a second. I mean, worst-case scenario, I can redial that number, he was able to hear us, he just could not talk. I could, I don't know what else to do, let's just give him a moment to see if he can join in here.
Thanks, Janet, is he, will he be trying to actually video conference in or just call the Teams number?
Just call the Teams number, yeah, at this point, and then I can disconnect him when he's done.
Thanks.
Janet, could you just call him on his cellphone, from your cellphone?
Put it on speaker. Yeah, I don't know if he can hear us, so yeah, I'll do that, give him a second, then I can do that, I can try that.
Okay.
I do, it's 586694.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I appreciate everybody's patience in this process, I think it's kind of like I said at the top about how well telecommuting is going, it's not without its challenges, but it's still, if you're in the big picture, how well things are working.
Commissioner, I'm going to go ahead and try and dial directly and see what we can do here. Hi. Hello?
Yeah.
So I don't, so what I'm going to do is.
Sounds like Janet muted herself to be able to have that preliminary discussion with him, and I'm going to suggest that it will be especially important, probably, if we try to do this sort of three-way call, if everybody mutes when they're not speaking.
Kayden Williams.
Is now joining.
Mr. Williams, are you with us? Looks like he's still muted.
I'm sorry, but Mr. Williams is representing the CPAs, the enforcement case that's next.
Oh, my mistake. I do see him by dashboard, it looks like Mr. Morgan is dialed back in, but is on mute still.
Is now exiting.
Do the commissioners who are joining by phone have to do something special to unmute themselves to start talking in the meeting today?
Yes, and get some instructions when they start.
I'm wondering if we want to hold this item down, our agenda, a little bit, and perhaps move on to the proposed stipulation. I understand that Mr. Williams is standing by to, this was adopted for 11:30. Is there any objection to doing that, to proceed to the enforcement hearing? Hearing none, could we get Mr. Williams back online with?
Unknown participant is now joining.
Commissioner, let's give it one more try here. Mr. Morgan, if you can try and get star six again to see if you can unmute. Okay, Commissioner, it's not working, I'll have to, maybe Jennifer can contact Mr. Morgan directly and decide what to do.
Yes, I can. Peter, again, should we consider his request and leave it at that, or try later?
I would suggest we move forward with the enforcement matter, and let's see if we can reach out and make it work. I could try perhaps dialing into the call from my work cellphone and see if I can do a three-way call and add him in that way.
Hey, thank you, I will call him right now, Commissioner Ammons, and let him know what the options are, that we'll try again. Are you thinking directly after the next enforcement matter?
Yes.
Thank you, I will let him know.
Do we have, do we have Mr. Williams of the Society of Certified Public Accountants ready to participate?
I'll dial him in.
Thank you. Thank you.
Unknown participant is now joining.
Mr. Williams, if you can hear, you'll need to unmute yourself by hitting star six. Commissioner, I'm not sure what's going on, they're not able to unmute themselves. I don't know what the issue is.
If it's, this is John Eater, can you hear me?
Yes. Yes.
Just, the other option would be to continue these until the next commission meeting, and those technical issues can be worked out.
Good morning, can you hear me?
Oh, there's somebody.
Hello?
Yes, this is David Hanks, Chair of the Public Disclosure Commission, to whom am I speaking?
This is Hayden Williams.
Hayden Williamson, you are here for the, the matter of the Washington State Society of Certified Public Accountants PAC?
I am.
Very good, we're pleased to, we're pleased to have you with us. I'm joined today by the other four commissioners of the Public Disclosure Commission, and we have staff also present. I believe that our, Kurt Young, I don't know if, if he will be presenting, or if it will be Sean presenting this, the proposed stipulation. Could I get an answer on that?
It would be Chad Standifer.
Chad, Chad, very good, thank you. Chad?
Yes.
Would you be sworn in, please? Do you swear that the testimony you are going to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Actually, Chair, as that may appropriate.
You were breaking up, would you repeat that, Chad?
Yes, sorry. So it would be appropriate to swear in Kurt Young, but not me, just since I'm just the staff representative as their counsel.
Very good. Mr. Young? And, and also Mr. Williams, I assume you're hearing me? Would you, would you raise your right hand, both of you, and be sworn in? Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you will give today is truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
This is Hayden Williams, and I do.
Thank you.
This is Kurt Young, and I do as well.
Thank you. And Kurt, I understand there is a proposed stipulation, and that this resolves case 34207, Washington State Society of Certified Public Accountants PAC, regarding alleged violation by failing to timely file summary campaign contributions and expenditure reports and monetary contribution reports, C3 forms, disclosing contributions and expenditures taken during calendar year 2016. Who, Kurt, do you want to?
Mr. Standifer will, but if you have any questions for me, I'll be available.
Thank you very much, Mr. Standifer.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair, and just want, want to check one more time, can everybody hear me fine?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Again, Chad Standifer, Assistant Attorney General, representing the Public Disclosure Commission's staff in this matter. Staff in the Washington Society of Certified Public Accountants PAC have entered into a stipulation as to facts, violations, and penalty. It has been provided to you, members of the commission, for your review in advance of today's hearing. You've also been provided, staffs, report investigation and exhibits in this case. To summarize the basic facts and violations of this case, the Washington Society of Certified Public Accountants is a statewide professional membership organization serving CPAs. The Washington Society of Certified Public Accountants PAC has been registered as a continuing political committee, reporting with the PDC dating back to at least the mid-1990s. The committee has stipulated on this matter to having violated RCW 4217A, 235, and 240, by failing to timely file summary campaign contribution and expenditure reports, also known as C4 reports, and monetary contribution reports, also known as C3 reports, disclosing contribution and expenditures undertaken during the calendar year 2016. Briefly, that includes a 21-day pre-primary election C4 report that was filed 41 days late and 20 days after the August 2nd, 2016, primary election. It also includes a seven-day pre-primary election C4 report that was filed 27 days late and 20 days after the August 2nd, primary election. It also includes an April 2016 C3 report filed 104 days late and 20 days after the primary election. A May 2016 C3 report filed 73 days late, 20 days after the August primary election. Then finally, there were two issues in July of 2016. A $15,000 contribution was disclosed in a C3 report 21 days late, and another contribution for $1,650 was disclosed 23 days late. The last two contributions I mentioned should have been reported in two separate C3 reports. So in total, there's a total of two late C4 reports and four late filed C3 reports. In terms of the penalty in this matter, as I mentioned, staff and the respondent have agreed to a penalty that is being proposed to you today. That total civil penalty is $2,500, half of that amount, $1,250 suspended, based on the condition that the committee not be found to have committed further violations of the statute of rules within the next 40 years. Staff placed more weight on the late-reported C4 reports, because those reports disclosed contributions to candidates. So in terms of the breakdown of the amount, a penalty of $750 was assessed for each of those two C4 reports. That's consistent with the penalty schedule that's found in your WAC 390, 37, 182. Staff placed slightly less weight on the late-fired C3 reports, assessing $250 for each of those four reports totaled 1,000. The C3 reports were viewed as less significant for two reasons. One, the late-reported contributions were all from CPA members or firms. And in addition, the committee had a large starting balance at the beginning of the election cycle, did receive other contributions that were timely reported. So again, in summary, of the $2,500 penalty, $1,500 for the late-filled C4 reports and $1,000 for the late-filled C3 reports. Return to the factors that are set forth in WAC 390, 37, 182, staff considered recommending the penalty. First, public was deprived of significant campaign finance information for the 2016 primary election involving $75,800 in monetary contributions to candidates in political committees. Second, the committee is affiliated with the Washington Society of Certified Public Accountants, a statewide organization with experienced staff administering its political committee. Third, the committee has been filing reports, as I mentioned earlier, dating back to the 90s. And fourth, the PAC does have the resources available to comply with the campaign finance reporting requirements. In terms of the mitigating factors here, there are several. At first, prior to when the complaint was filed, the committee took corrective action and implemented new internal controls, including hiring a new treasurer. Second, the committee timely filed C3 and C4 reports for all of the calendar years, both of the calendar years 2018 and 2019. So the steps that the corrective action, so the corrective action taken, does seem to be working in terms of the committee's compliance for the past few filing years. A third, the committee did file reports throughout the calendar years of 2015 through 2017, so this is not a case where you have a wholesale lack of reporting. And then finally, the committee has not previously been found to violate the RCW 4217A, WAC 390. No comparable cases were provided to you today, because most of the prior cases dealing with late reporting really address committees that have not filed reports a year or longer. In contrast, this was a relatively isolated period in late reporting of this committee. Staff also want to mention the committee's cooperation in efficiently seeking to resolve this enforcement matter, which is again a mitigating factor in here in the commission's rules. One final note, this matter was brought forward by the complainant, and there were other allegations raised in the complaint beyond the late reporting that I've discussed. And you may have noted that in the investigation. Concerning those other allegations, staff found no evidence of material violation required enforcement. Staff did issue a reminder to the committee to timely deposit all of its campaign contributions received from its members within five business days of receiving. Or accordance with 4217A 220, or dimension that reminder. And it also addressed the requirement that they complete a separate C3 which deposit. And the remaining allegations dismissed against that. With that, myself and Mr. Young are available to certainly answer any questions.
Are there questions, Chad? Hearing none, Mr. Williams, would you like to be heard?
I have nothing to say at this point, everything that was stated, I believe to be true.
Thank you, and the PAC is in full compliance currently?
It is.
Thank you. Are there further discussion points by the commission? Hearing none, the chair would entertain a motion regarding the stip.
Mr. Chair, I move that commission, respondent is now in compliance with RCW 4217A and WAC 390, and accept the stipulation, max implications and penalty as proposed.
Second.
It, it was moved by Commissioner Lemon that we find, that the commission find the respondent is now in compliance with RCW 4217A and WAC 390, and accept the stipulation of facts, violations, penalty as proposed. Is, and it was seconded by, was that Commissioner Downing I heard?
No, it's Prabha.
Thank you, Commissioner Jarrett. Are there further comments? Hearing none, the chair will, will call for the final vote. All in favor will say aye.
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 Are there, and I would call for any noes there might be, or abstentions. Hearing none, the chair declares the stipulation approved as submitted to us, and the, the order is already, looks like it's already ready for signing and, and delivery promptly. Is there anything further on this particular matter?
This is John Eater, was it five zero?
Yes, it was. Very good, thank you much for both, both sides on this, resolving this matter in a, in a way that is quite acceptable to the commission. Kurt, you are currently already queued up. Would you like to give a Reader's Digest version of your usual excellent enforcement update?
Commissioner Ammons, I need to interrupt.
Pardon me?
I need to interrupt, I have another one to raise your last bullet, if you'd like to try and-
That won't be fine.
Okay, give me just a moment.
And Mr. Williams is still on the line there, I didn't know if you needed to give him any further instructions on the order being out in certain number of time or anything.
As we say, within 30 days, I see there is a signed, I have a, give a signed stipulation already that's, that's in preparation for the commission action, signed on the 13th by Director Lavalley and Mr. Williams.
This is John Eater, I'll write-
This is Hayden Williams, I'm not sure if I'm supposed to still be on the line or not.
No, it sounds, it sounds like the, the commission is unanimous in approving the stipulation, and the order will be forthcoming.
All right, well, thank you very much for all of your assistance, thank you, everyone.
Thank you, goodbye.
Did you want me to go ahead, Mr. Chair Ammons?
I'm waiting to hear if we have Mr. Morgan on the line.
Got it, I'll go ahead and mute until I find otherwise.
Kurt, why don't you proceed, and then if we, we'll be, we'll be interrupted if, if that call comes through.
Will do, thank you, Chair Ammons and members of the commission, Kurt Young, compliance officer. Due to some, obviously, issues that we had, the presentations and the PDFs weren't the same as otherwise. The links, I didn't have time to present those. We, at the time of the spreadsheet was created, we had 66 active cases, we currently have 59. Of those, 16 are 2938 cases, and tend to be the more complex ones that are left, so we are working to resolve those. We have 43 post-2938 cases, so as of right now, we're in pretty good shape. We're working diligently to resolve the cases. During the period, we closed a number of cases. The majority of those I noted were for the group enforcement, either from the lobbyist L2 requirement, the lobbyist L3 for lobbyist employment. L two requirement, the lobbyist L three for lobbyist employers, or the lobbyist certification. So while we did close a number of cases, the majority of those were from that group enforcement. I didn't get into specifically itemizing the other ones. There was only twelve or thirteen or fourteen, and I'd be happy to answer any questions. I was told to present a pretty short and to the point presentation, but if you had any specifics, I'd be happy to answer that.
Thank you, Kurt. This is Peter. I would just add, appreciate your being brief, and the one statutory duty that we have, of course, is to bring any referrals to the A G, to the commission's attention. I think that statutory duty is generally written with the idea that it's when the executive director with the chair's concurrence does it so that the full commission is informed. In this case, we had the referral that the full commission itself had done, but just belt and suspenders approach, make sure that we note that for the record as well. Which was, of course, the Facebook matter was referred to the attorney general.
Thank you, Peter. You have Morgan on the phone?
I do.
Very good. Thank you so much, Kurt Young. And we will return to the reconsideration calendar. Martin Morgan, Mr. Morgan, are you on the line?
I am. Can you hear me now?
Yes, I can. Thank you so much. Sorry about the technological problems. We have, this is David Ammons. I'm chair of the commission, and all five commissioners are taking part in today's meeting by remote access. And so we will, if you would like to be heard, I will swear you in currently. The staff has already been sworn in.
Yeah, yeah, I probably would like to be heard if you don't mind.
Very good. Would you raise your right hand? And do you solemnly affirm or swear that you will tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in today's proceeding?
Yes, I do.
Thank you very much. And if staff would present this for us, it is a motion for reconsideration.
Yes, Commissioner Ammons, this is Jennifer Hansen, and I've been in communication with Mr. Morgan throughout this process, including today's technical difficulties. I'm glad he's able to be heard. This is a request for reconsideration, so it's similar to the one that was heard earlier for Ms. Overmeyer. So the commission has two decisions before them. The first is whether to make a motion to reconsider the order in P D C case five eight six nine four. That is the first matter on the, before the commission. If the commission would like to hear any details at all regarding this, because Mr. Morgan wanted to participate today, I would like to make sure that he has an opportunity to explain anything that might relate to the commission's decision regarding whether to actually reconsider this order today or not.
Would you refresh the commission's memory on this case? We have received in the mail, email, and would you just recap briefly for us?
Yes, I certainly will. And Mr. Morgan, by the way, also received a copy of this same memo. And I believe, Commissioner Ammons, that you'll want to mute your mic again. Thank you. So this matter is related to Martin Morgan, who was a candidate for Kirkland City Council in two thousand and nineteen. He was found in violation of R C W forty-two seventeen A two oh five for failing to timely file a C one or candidate registration and R C W forty-two seventeen A seven hundred for failing to timely file a personal financial affairs statement within two weeks of declaring candidacy. And both of those forms were due no later than June third, two thousand and nineteen as a candidate, a declared candidate in that election. Mr. Morgan was also found in violation of the conditions of a previous order that had been entered in August twenty-first, two thousand and fifteen in P D C case number sixteen dash two one zero for failing to timely file C one and F one reports due within two weeks of declaring candidacy. And again, the reason for the violation of the conditions, the previous order indicated that the entire portion, the entire penalty that was assessed in that case sixteen dash two one zero, that the entire penalty was suspended based on no future violations of R C W forty-two seventeen A. And so staff presented at a brief enforcement hearing that Mr. Morgan had not only violated the statute for the two thousand and nineteen election reports being late, but also had violated the conditions of the previous order. That was heard at a brief enforcement hearing by Commissioner Ammons, and Mr. Morgan was found in violation of both of those and was assessed a penalty according to the WAC. And Mr. Morgan timely made a request to have this particular matter reviewed, but the commission wasn't meeting within the allotted time, twenty days from the date of the request, and so it had to be converted to a reconsideration instead, and that's what we're hearing today. And I'm happy to give any more details. I kind of went lean on this as well, given the time, so.
Are there questions of Jennifer?
Jennifer, this is Bill Downing. In Mr. Morgan's response, he just said in kind of conclusory fashion, the statute does not apply to me. And I wondered if you had understanding of what he meant.
Hey, I got a big echo going on.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Mr. Morgan. I think it's done now. I believe it has to do with different, the way that different people are participating in this meeting today. So in answer to your question, Commissioner Downing, that is part of the reason why Mr. Morgan wanted to participate today is to be able to convey some additional concerns that he had related to the order itself, the proceedings that led up to the order being issued, so the hearing notices, the other information that was sent to him, and then the actual brief enforcement hearing itself. He wanted to address some of those as part of his presentation today and maybe can explain a little bit more about the reasons why he's making a request for reconsideration. I hate to point out procedural, but if John Meter could weigh in again, do we need to pause long enough for the commission to be able to consider the idea of whether to actually reconsider this order before we move on to more detail?
Well, I think that's why I was asking what your understanding was of the basis for any reconsideration.
Thank you very much. If it makes sense to Chair Ammons to allow Mr. Morgan to present his own information as to what the reason for the reconsideration is today.
I definitely would grant the floor to Mr. Morgan at this time.
Is this when I start saying something?
Yes, please. Yes, this is your opportunity to be heard.
Yeah, yeah, I got a lot of echoing back and forth, so I apologize if it happens to you as well. I don't know what was really said there because it's a big echo, but I'm asking for reconsideration because I didn't even know that there was a hearing going on. I travel a lot, and I have a difficult time getting a computer, and apparently they send the nut stuff to my email. And once the election was over, I tend not to do, I'm a phone guy, because I travel a lot. So I would have definitely participated if I would have known that the hearing was, I believe, in January.
I guess, this is Chair Ammons, I guess the commission would be interested in why you believe you did not do the violations that the staff has alleged.
Okay, so, all right. I guess when I, the alleged violations, apparently they happened because I didn't do them, but when I tried to file things, I would go on there. At one point, my, the computer I had wouldn't recognize, the ORCA wouldn't let me go back in. There was some sort of a new system. I couldn't use, I have Internet Explorer, and I couldn't get in there. At one time, it said, because I had Internet Explorer, I couldn't get into, I couldn't access it or something like that. And then on several occasions, I would try at night to do it, and it would be being updated or, you know, I guess there was a lot of new systems in two thousand and twenty or two thousand and nineteen or, there's a lot of updates or something like that. But I tried many times to try to get it done, so I didn't violate anything. And then I started saying, okay, if I can't get this done, what's my responsibility? And I just, so I just chose not to ask for any money or spend any money to try to, you know, pad myself a little bit of not being able to access the F one and the C one type stuff. And then I found out I was able to do it later on with some assistance from the P D C office there, and then they had me sign into some SAW thing, but that gets me my F one and stuff like that. And I also printed some stuff that I wish I could be there to show you, where it said that I didn't need to do an F one because I currently had an F one on file. Are you there?
Yes, I am. Does this complete your remarks?
Um, I believe so. I wish I could be there to kind of see the stuff and kind of tell what's really going on, but, you know, I'll work my way through it, I guess.
So is your testimony that you have subsequent to knowing there was an issue have completed all of your requirements for current and previous filing requirements?
Yeah, I, yeah, I know I'm currently up to date and I've done everything I'm required to do. I did that all with the filer assistant. I can't remember, might have met Tavis or somebody, or I did work with Jennifer as well. Yeah, but I am under the, yeah, I am under the belief of being told that there was nothing more I needed to do at this time.
Okay, I would open the floor to the commissioners to ask questions or make comments or to make a motion if that is the desire of anyone.
I would make a motion this time. I move that the commission then either request for reconsideration on P D C case number five eight six nine four.
It's been moved by Commissioner Lehman that the commission declined to reconsider this matter. Is there a second? The motion dies for lack of a second. Is there another motion?
A second, I'm sorry. Delayed and unmuted.
Okay, and the motion is before us then by Commissioner Lehman, seconded by Commissioner Downing, that the commission declined to reconsider the final order in this matter. Further discussion?
I make this, I make this motion just based on my understanding of the facts in this case and the presentation by the respondent. It appears that the, while there were some technical difficulties in making, doing the filings, making the filings on time, it happened on multiple occasions, and it appears to me that the staff of the P D C went above and beyond it, attempting to achieve compliance a number of times with this respondent, and therefore I believe a reconsideration at this point is not appropriate.
Um, I did everything I possibly could, and I worked with the P D C as possible, as much as possible. And I worked very diligently to get this rectified.
Thank you, Mr. Morgan. Are there other comments from the commission? Hearing none, the motion before you is to not reconsider the final order in this matter. All in favor will say aye.
Aye.
And opposed?
No.
Who is the no?
Brad. I'd like to reconsider, so, no.
Okay. By, the chair declares that the motion by representative, by Commissioner Lehman, the, that the request for reconsideration be denied at this time, and that motion passes for one. Thank you. This concludes this matter today.
Is there a way to appeal this?
Not that I'm aware of. John Meter?
Can you hear me? This is John Meter.
Yes.
Yes, the commission will issue an order at the end of that order, your appeals rights will be laid out for you.
I'm sorry, I haven't really heard much of anything. It's been very broken up, very sketchy.
Did you, did you hear what our attorney just said?
Uh, no, I really didn't. In fact, I haven't really heard, I haven't really heard any of this, I haven't really heard any of this hearing, actually. And I'm not so sure that you guys were actually able to hear me.
I believe we did hear you. I heard you, what I think was all of your comments. Our Attorney General has just said that an order will be forthcoming within thirty days and that your appeal rights to Superior Court would be articulated in that.
Sorry. And then who was the no, both?
Commissioner Jarrett voted no on the motion for, to not grant the reconsideration.
He voted no to not grant the reconsideration?
That's correct.
Well, am I being reconsidered or not?
The commission considered your case and has decided not to reconsider the final order. That is the final action of this commission.
Well, if he was the only no, how come it wasn't being reheard?
He was not on the prevailing side. He was on the side that wanted to reconsider, and that is, the other four commissioners were in agreement that it should not be reopened.
Oh, I thought you said that he was the no that said he did not want to hear it.
No, no, I said he was the no to the motion which Commissioner Lehman had made to deny reconsideration.
Okay. All right, yeah. I still didn't really hear anything that really went on. I wish. went on. I, I wish the commission could reconsider maybe an in-person thing so it'd be much more clear and I could actually understand what was going on and see the information put forth. I don't have anything to even read. All right, I, I had stuff to submit, but I, I obviously can't do that.
Thank you for your comments. I'm not, the, the matter is now concluded as far as, as the commission is concerned. If you wish to appeal to the court system, that is yours, your, your privilege, I think. So the chair will call this matter to a close and will invite us to move to management team updates now.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It's Peter. I know we're, we're trying to keep things brief and we've had some challenges along the way. Excuse me. But I'm, but I'm, I think things have gone relatively smoothly and I appreciate everybody's forbearance and participation in getting through this. I know you. I think that was our previous participant. We don't have a lot to add. In terms of our agency spotlight, I, I think I just go back to what I began speaking about this morning, which was our transition to remote working. That actually was a plan that was already in place but was moving along slowly, which was the idea of migrating our work to the Microsoft Teams environment. I am not a Microsoft shareholder, but I have to say that's been a remarkable tool to enable us to do our work and, again, thanks to the IT team, but everybody participating in this, that we really stepped up that effort way ahead of the schedule we thought we were going to be transitioning to. And that's just, you know, it's, it's been great in this current environment, which unfortunately I think is going to last for some period of time. But I think it's going to be a remarkable tool going forward as well, that people will be able to participate remotely in every which environment, if somebody might have a vacation day, but their expertise is needed and we can arrange for them to participate in a video conference such as this for an hour while they're away. We'll be able to do that. We'll be able to offer some more flexibility to the workforce perhaps when people are able to work from home and, and add that additional benefit. So I wanted to highlight that as our agency spotlight and thank you all for, for being part of the experiment.
Thank you very much, Peter, and thank you for, for jockeying the team during all of this, this really distressing time. And I've just been so impressed with the, with the can-do attitude of the staff and, and the executive team. It's been remarkable to me to watch.
We appreciate your saying so and it's not that it's difficulties, but it's, it's really a tribute to the staff that they're able to make this transition. We look forward to having more full team communications like I described before to make sure that we keep those human connections too, which is important to our well-being.
I would invite Kim Bradford, if she has anything for, to tell us in, in the matter of communications and outreach.
Good afternoon, commissioners. Can you hear me?
Yes.
I'm getting a little bit of feedback. David, are you Chair Ammons? Are you? Oh, there you go. Um, I'll go quickly. I do have a few things for you. So our, we're in the midst of what is usually our heaviest F1 filing season. Headed into the shutdown, we were actually trending ahead of where we usually are at this time of the year. Filings have now slowed, as you might expect. We have so far, usually we would have about 2,300 F1s on file. At this point in the year, we have about 2,100 on file. We, we've had 373 files since we went to remote work. So people are being able to file. We are being able to help them. But I think a lot of filers' attention is elsewhere. Along those lines, we are looking to answer some concerns that we have heard expressed by filers about the tax deadline moving to July. Usually people kind of pair those two where they're filing both their tax returns and their F1 at the same time. We, we don't think it's necessary to wait till you have your tax information because the information is so different, but some filers do really try to pair those tasks. So we, IT has been working in consultation with us in filer assistance to do some additional functionality in the F1 application itself to allow people to at least partially report the information. So if they don't have access to all the information they need, this would give them the option of submitting and then agreeing to come back after the end of the declared emergency and amend to complete their report. So that at least gets them in the system, gets them started, and that's usually the biggest hurdle we see filers face. We also are continuing to offer the option of hardship exemptions. We, our customer service staff, Tammy, Jordan, Colin especially, have done a remarkable job of, as those come in, the first try is let's help you, walk you through this. And they have had amazing success at getting people through the system. For those who just can't get through the system, we do go ahead and, you know, go ahead and prepare those as applications for hardship exemptions for Peter's review. And to date, we've granted nine of those. We are hearing from filers, and you may hear this out in the community, a general surprise about the level of detail required in the F1. Some folks think that might be a function of the new application and we're trying to explain to them that no, these, this is the law and this is what has always been required. The application is just simply making it more plain to you. So if you hear some of that, we are, we are answering those concerns and we also are pointing out that the commission has made regulatory reform in that area a priority and is continuing to work along those lines, even though we didn't have the success we had hoped for with our legislation. Um, you'll probably hear more about this from James.
Kim, before you leave that point, and maybe Peter, is there, are there any of those reforms that we can adopt administratively to the form, some of the, like, the year stock valuation and children not being called out by name and a few of those things? Can, can we do those administratively within our, our overall RCW?
So I just had a conversation this morning with BG and Sean about that. We are taking a look at whether we can do some of that by rule. The minor children's names, we've, we've solved that. That, that is not required in the application. Where we get, some of the biggest concerns that I've heard are continuing to require addresses of financial holdings and also of income sources. We, you know, used to see a lot of F1 forms that lacked that information, so it wasn't really clear to people that it actually was a statutory requirement. So perhaps there's something we can do there about, you know, in lieu of an address, similar information that would help the public identify exactly what business or financial interest the filer was disclosing. Peter, I didn't mean to cut you off. Did you have anything to add there?
No, thank you, Kim. That was a good synopsis and we'll continue to look at those things. You know, looking, perhaps grasping for a silver lining, but the fact that things didn't change too much due to legislation, given all that the IT team and the entire agency has had on its plate with this transition to remote working, perhaps is a blessing in disguise in the sense that we haven't had to update the F1 application greatly to, to reflect in any great changes.
That's very true.
Can I ask a question on the F1s? I, I know that, that, I know that I've been asked by a number of filers, and I'm sure all the commissioners probably do, and people they run into in the grocery store and everybody else, asking why we don't extend the deadline given the current situation. And I love your answer, Kim. It sounds like you guys really thought this through and I, I really like the, the agency's perspective on this, and that is at least get it started. And, and you'll allow people to fill in more after they do their taxes. I, I really do like that. I'm wondering if we, do we need to do any kind of emergency rule action? Because, you know, in our, in WAC 39024025, it does state specifically the deadline is April 15th. So are people, I, I'm curious what your thoughts are about whether anything is needed.
No, Commissioner Layman, that's also a statutory deadline, so there's not much we could do, even if we changed the rule. April 15th is spelled out specifically in the statute, so we couldn't change that. So I think the, the, the best we can do is to, exactly as you described, we're asking people, do what you can. We're adding an alternative certification. We obviously encourage everybody to, to get the full and complete F1 done. It's probably a relatively rare circumstance where people don't have access to the information they need. But if that should happen, we ask them to fill out what they can and certify that they have done the best they can, can do and then we'll supplement that with an amended form as soon as possible and no later than 30 days after the governor's state of emergency is lifted. But the deadline still stands in the law. What we would, we as staff would take into consideration greatly if people did do their best and let us know that they did and do amend. And we would ask, if anything came before the commission, we would ask you to give some more consideration to that.
Thank you, Peter. I, I appreciate that. Where is the, I'm sorry, I don't have it right in front of me. Where, where is the statutory April 15 deadline?
Oh, it's right there in the, the main section that.
Is it in, I'm sorry, I didn't, is it in?
I'll give you the specific site, but so.
I mean, I believe you, I just haven't found it.
I think it's in 700.
Oh, it's in 700?
Yeah, 700 sub 1.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I wonder if we need to do some messaging on this, Kim, either on our website prominently or perhaps amending the notice that is going out to people who have not yet filed?
Yes, we've already made the necessary changes to the reminder message and we will also be pushing it on the website. It's not available yet. It should be available early next week. So, and as we get individual inquiries, I'm also telling them to go ahead and check with us next week, but that this is coming.
Anything else, Kim?
Yeah, quickly, I just wanted to tell you, we do have, and you may hear more from James, as part of the ORCA project, there's a new release of ORCA coming. It will not be mandatory update, so we're not going to catch anyone in this midst of the, the declared emergency having to update their ORCA. But this is a move that we do need to make because of the ongoing project. Peter referenced earlier the training we were able to do for candidates and committees. That was our first time doing training on Zoom. We did it on the fly. A lot of flexibility was required of our staff members and they did a great job. And we got great participation and a lot of really happy folks who were glad that we could continue to, to have training even in this time. So that'll be something we continue. Kind of like, don't let a good crisis or a bad crisis go to waste kind of thing. So, you know, kind of thrust us into something that we had hoped to do for a long time. And I just wanted to briefly mention, you may have seen the suspension of some of the meeting and Open Records Act provisions. Just wanted to let you know that despite those suspensions, the only thing that affects us here as far as our open records processing is the lack of, the ability to make in-person requests. Tony is doing a phenomenal job, working from home and continuing to reply to records requests and meet our five-day response period requirement. And our, we're getting that installments out as quickly as we would if we were in the office.
Wasn't, didn't the governor's order suspend the five-day?
It did, it did. But we're going to continue to comply as much as we can.
Thank you. Any questions of Kim? Excellent, excellent report, Kim. Thank you very much. James?
First, I'd say thank you to the chair and the members of the commission staff, and most importantly, all of the public participants and those viewing for bearing with us as we work out this new way of making things continue to happen. It is definitely a big experiment. You know, Kim mentioned sort of never let, never let a good crisis go to waste. And we have been able to do quite a few things very, very quickly. We, for example, have an entirely new phone system that natively runs wherever we want it to run and doesn't require you to be in the office. And we're going to stay on that phone system after this is all over. So when we go back to the office, we're going to be using that phone system. All of our access to files and things is on a modern platform that enables remote access. And I think a really good way to sort of see how this has unfolded is, it's certainly been more painful for everyone, the commissioners and the staff, everyone, than we would like it to be. We would have liked all of this to have rolled out smoother. And at the same time, I think the reason we were able to do this all so quickly is it's because this isn't something that we did just because of the current situation, but rather it's where we have wanted to go all along. And we already had plans in place about how to get there. So we were going slower in executing the plan because we would like it to go more smoothly and we would like to manage change more for the staff so that it's not all thrust upon them at once. But the fact that we had a plan and that we knew exactly where we wanted to go really is what made it possible for us to do all of this so quickly. And to not implement stopgap solutions that then we're going to back away from, but rather to just move down the path where we're headed. And now that we're there, we're never going back. So while it's been disruptive and it's been challenging, the fact that we had a plan about where we wanted to go made this all effort worth, effort that was worthwhile in doing and didn't set, actually set us back. So just a couple more things and I'll, I'll be brief. I just wanted to let the commissioners know that the campaign finance reporting project continues on. The first week that we moved into trying to figure out how to get everybody out of the office had a substantial impact on the project. Not to mention, the team just didn't do a great job at estimating the amount of work that we were going to be able to do during that two-week cycle as well. So sort of two things hit us there. And at the end of that work, that cycle, we had a lot of things left on the list. But I'm really happy to report, we are a week and two, a week and one day into the new work cycle. We're actually far ahead of where we expected to be. The team is making amazing progress. And when I say the team, not just the technical team, but their ability to interact with staff, get decisions made, send out prototypes of how things might look, schedule for when we're going to do deployments, all of that interaction is happening really well, even working in this remote environment. The team made great progress. And when we met for our mid-sprint, the sprints are two-week cycle, when we met for our mid-sprint, planning with the product owners, we decided we're going to pull in some more work for that two-week period. going to pull in some more work for that two-week period and actually grabbed a few more things that we're going to work on. One of those is getting this new version of ORCA out to the filers earlier rather than later, so it's going to make it easier for them to transition. We have a longer window where it will be optional before it becomes mandatory, so people can get there in their own time. So I have to say that despite it all, everybody in the agency has done an exceptional job at adapting to all the change that has been going on. And again, it's really nice to see that all of this work is positive progress toward the place where we want it to be anyway, rather than just doing some stopgap measures. And I think with that, I will ask if there are any questions from the Commissioners and I'll just leave it at that.
Just one quick question, James. Why would you be wearing a tie?
Um, well.
Commissioner Lehman, I'm not convinced that with his technological skills, I'm not convinced that's not some sort of filter and he's actually wearing a t-shirt.
Good point.
I was thinking about that myself, actually, this morning and I told myself, you know, I really want to put on a tie because I, I don't want to get too much in the mode of fuzzy socks. But I will say that I am wearing fuzzy socks around the house because we don't wear shoes in the house, so I've still got my fuzzy socks on.
So, this is Brad. Two, two quick things. One is, I'm really impressed with how well you guys have actually managed this transition to a virtual world and give your team, both the business side and the technical side, a lot of kudos for that. Second thing is, I think we really do need to have a lessons learned about this recent hearing that we had with our friend from Kirkland. I don't think that went at all well and I think that, that just the difficulty in getting the public engaged in this puts a question in our ability to make a decision like we made. So I just raised that, no, don't want to play any blame or anything like that. It's, it is an experiment, we are learning, but I think this is a focus that we, we have to have to learn from.
Really well taken and I appreciate your bringing that up and absolutely, this is especially the first time that we've had such broad participation with folks calling in on the dial-in line or us dialing out to them, as well as having large groups participating via audio. And I have a list, as I've been on the meeting today, going through of all the things that we need to work out, how we provide instruction to people and what options we offer. And so we're learning a lot from this and we'll keep making progress toward that so that if we need to do this again, it's just getting better and better.
And I will add to that, it's, it's not, these are not issues we hadn't anticipated. In fact, you know, we did dry runs and called ourselves on our work cell phones to patch ourselves and to give those things a dry run. Nothing ever goes perfectly as planned, but we did try to anticipate those issues and test them out.
Learning is always fun and always enjoyable and is a personal growth experience.
Thank you, James, for that good report. Is there any other business to come before the Commission?
Commissioner Ammons?
Yes.
Hi, before you go into exec, I need to have a decision made if you guys are going to come back after exec or how we're going to do this.
It is not the Chair's intention to call an executive session. Sent around an email asking if anyone had any business for such and the only thing I came up with was litigation update and was advised that there's nothing particularly noteworthy in terms of ongoing development of that. And so it is not my intention, so I intend to adjourn the meeting shortly. Is there any further? And thank you, Jan, we all are in your debt for arranging all of the, all that we have been able to do, even though we are, you know, some of us were 300 miles apart.
It was a team effort. There was lots of people behind the scenes.
It was a team's effort and a team effort. Thank you so much to all on the line. Thank you to my fellow Commissioners for your, for your participation and your wisdom and thank you to staff. With that, we will stand adjourned.
Thank you all.